Council for November fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Our first actions tonight is the Dakota Land, Water, and People acknowledgment. And I'm going to turn to council member Morales.
Metropolitan Council acknowledges that the land we currently call Minnesota, and specifically the seven county region, is the ancestral homeland of the Dakota Oyate, who are present and active contributors to our thriving region. As part of the Metropolitan Council's commitment to address the unresolved legacy of genocide, dispossession, and settler colonialism, and the fact that government institutions, including the Metropolitan Council, benefited economically, politically, and institutionally after the forcible removal of the Dakota Oyate. The Metropolitan Council is dedicated to instilling land, water, and people commitments in regional policy. These commitments support the Dakota Oyate, the eleven federally recognized tribes of Minnesota, Ho-Chunk Nation, and the American Indian communities representing over one hundred fifty diverse tribal nations that call the seven county region home.
Thank you, council member. Onto approval of the agenda. If there's no changes or additions, we can proceed. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting minutes. If there's no changes or additions, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by council member Morales and seconded by council member Wolf. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and those are adopted. Now we move in. We have a public hearing this evening. So the first item on our agenda is business item two thousand and twenty five dash two seven three, Public Hearing on the Draft Amendment to the Two Thousand and Fifty Regional Parks and Trails Policy Plan Modernizing Mapping Program. Thank you for joining us today to consider comments related to the draft Imagine Two Thousand and Fifty Regional Parks and Trails Amendment. A redlined version of the proposed amendment is located in attachment one of business item two thousand and twenty five dash two two zero. The regional parks and trails system has grown substantially since inception in nineteen seventy four, making it necessary to embrace technological advancements and process improvements. While regional park and trail long-range plans will continue to serve as a vehicle for Met Council approvals, this two thousand and twenty five policy plan amendment seeks to establish the regional parks and trails geographic information systems data set as the primary reference for regional parks and trails boundaries of long-range plan status. The GIS data set will support acreage-dependent calculations and reporting. It will also serve as a resource for policy plan, web, and promotional mapping. The GIS maps parks and trails at the parcel, marks, maps parks and trails at the parcel level through an interactive platform that supports annual updates and in-depth analysis. By formalizing the GIS as the source for the regional park and trail boundaries, the system achieves greater precision and consistency throughout the entire region. And with that, I can now open this public hearing, and we welcome any public comments. To my knowledge, we haven't had anybody who's pre-registered to speak. So I would just say if anyone's here to speak on the amendment today. All right, seeing none, we can now close the public hearing. Thank you for attending and participating. Public comments must be received by five o'clock on Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. As a reminder to comment on the draft Two Thousand and Fifty Regional Parks and Trails Policy Plan Amendment, members of the public who are listening may still provide public comment in the following ways. Write the council at three ninety Robert Street North, St. Paul, Minnesota, five five one zero one. Fax us at six five one dash six zero two one three one three. Email the council at public.info@metc.state.mn.us or record a comment on the public comment line at six five one six zero two one five zero zero. At the close of the public comment process, staff will prepare a summary of public comments. The Met Council will have an opportunity to review those comments prior to council action on the amendment. We will now resume with the rest of our agenda. Moving on, we have one information item tonight, and I'm sure it will be very, or spur some conversations. So it's the potential regional impacts of high-volume water users.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Lisa Barajas, Executive Director of Community Development, and I'm joined by my colleagues in Environmental Services.
Good evening, Jen Kustruski, Environmental Services, Assistant Manager, Policy and Planning.
John Klebek, also Environmental Services, Assistant Manager of the Wastewater Planning and Community Programs Group.
Welcome.
We have a big topic for you today that we've been working through. And as I know, members of the Community Development Committee have heard about with amendments related to high-volume water users in front of us, as well as, I know, some conversations with council members about projects in your districts that we know that there are potential impacts, as well as a whole lot of questions about what high-volume water users mean for our region. So we wanted to set today's conversation as a level-setting conversation for all of our council members today about what we know today, the impacts we see or are anticipating, as well as some next steps that we have planned, along with hearing from you about your concerns and thoughts to help guide our work in the coming months as we continue to determine how best to address issues that we're seeing with these users. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues, and we'll be sort of trading on and off over the course of this conversation today. Thank you.
So just to give an outline of the journey that we have ahead of us, we are going to give a little bit about backgrounds, about what exactly a high-volume water user is. We will cover what our planning processes are for the council for when those developments come forward for our region. We will be addressing some key areas of concern that staff have been noodling on over the past couple of months, years. And then lastly, we're gonna have some conclusions and then questions for you all. So, high-volume water user, it's, it's a mouthful. It is a title. It is, it describes a set of industries or developments that has a consumptive use that exceeds one hundred million gallons per year. To give you some set of context, the average individual in Ameri, well, in the Twin Cities consumes seventy-five to ninety gallons per day. And so if you do the math and do the conversion, if you talk about a hundred million gallons per day, that is enough water on that lower side of consumption to hydrate over six, thirty-six thousand individuals per year. So it's a large volume of water. Generally, when we say, when we talk about these concepts, people think data centers. And I am intentionally trying not to use the term data center when thinking about this entire industry, because there are other industries that also are high-volume water users. Some examples in the photos are, you know, if we are talking about food and beverage bottling companies, there is some really innovative ideas about alternative aviation fuels. That is also a high-water-demanding industry. But we also are talking about just irrigation for agricultural producers. That demands a lot of water. If we are thinking about power generation, flood control, construction de-watering, and municipal water supply does fall under those permittees that have those large volumes that they take out. When we are thinking about the high-volume water user industries, generally, there are three drivers that these industries are interested in, and that's thinking about economic or electrical demands, and that water helps to achieve those goals. There could be innovative technology that this might be a new way to do the work driving that industry. And then lastly, we all are guilty of this one, or at least I am, increased digital needs. If you store anything on the cloud, if you ask Gemini or ChatGPT or whatever your flavor of AI machine, like you are using a data center that is using a lot of water for every one of those inquiry, or every one of those queries. So what does this mean for the whole country? I took some time to get some data to just say what are the nationwide trends. And this is specifically to data centers, even though I said we are thinking broadly. But the amount of water that a data center uses depends on the type of data center, the scale, the size. And so if we are thinking about those small commercial edge facilities, they don't actually use that much water, and they could be, we already have some in the Twin Cities of those smaller data centers. They don't demand that much water. However, if we are talking about those hyperscales, those really big, you know, if we're thinking about Meta or AWS or those, if any of those cloud service companies, that is where we do fall into those hyperscale areas. Across all data centers in the U.S. in two thousand and twenty-three, data centers were directly responsible for the consumption of over seventeen point four billion gallons of water. That consumption amount is expected to double by two thousand and twenty-eight, because we are leaning more on those AIs and other data technologies to help with our data storage. Going back to the scale, the total capacity of hyperscale data centers, it doubles every four years. So we need to continue to grow our number of data centers because of the demand that we all are putting on that digital world. And we do know that this capacity is rapidly climbing. And so it's projected, as you can see there, two thousand and twenty-four values are in that inset to the right, and then the projections for two thousand and twenty-eight, which is the doubling of water consumption nationally. And so this does mean, this has some impacts for the Twin Cities region. We know that data centers, I'm sure, well, I won't assume that your news feed is the same as mine, but my aggregate news feed constantly is telling me when new data centers are popping up over the country and when states are running into issues about having water supply to meet those industry needs. Perhaps I Google too much about data centers or high-volume water users. But the, the question comes down to, we know that these industries are looking to put in, put, put down roots in areas. And so what makes an ideal location? If we're thinking about it, clearly, they do need abundant water. There's a need for capacity on the electrical grid. Fiber optic cables and cable and fiber optic latency, this is a little bit more specific to the data center needs. But if we are thinking about those other types of high-volume waters, like connection to transportation or distribution corridors are also very important to get products to market. Land availability, financial incentives, and a skilled workforce. So this is sort of what our high-volume water user industry is looking for, for a location. And how does that match up for the Twin Cities? We get to say yes to all of those things, because we do have a perception of water abundance. We do have capacity on the electrical grid. We have capacity within our fiber optic systems. We have a robust transportation system. We have available land. We have financial incentives that are recruiting industry to the state and to the region. We have a strong and skilled workforce. And then one more additional attribute that we have is that we have a cold climate. So that means if we are thinking about those data centers or heat-producing, high-volume water users, they can open the windows in the winter, and nature can help cool their processes. So that seems like it would be also help with the bottom line of their business. So we seem like a really great location, and knowing that, we need to have a plan for when they come.
Right, as a regional planning agency, those are things that we're always thinking ahead of, especially, as you know, when we're looking ahead to what regional growth looks like as far as households and employment, we use as kind of a rule of thumb of what a per-employee water use might look like, land use might look like, and per household, what water and use might look like for that long-range planning purpose. But we don't always, we, our current long-range and our current local comprehensive plans do not contemplate these sort of hyperscale users, as Jen had referred to them, as large-volume water users, because they aren't the typical use. Just akin to, like, we don't consider stadiums to be a typical use in a commercial, an area that's guided for downtown. We don't consider data centers or other high-volume water users to be a typical use in any industrial park or land-guided area for industrial. But this process, as it's been unfolding, has been really, as illustrated on the slide, is really around that those economic development groups really recruiting the industry to this, to the region. And then municipalities are approached for that consideration when they start getting into that due diligence of what land use or what land might be available, what power might be available, what water or wastewater facilities might be available to support a proposed use in this area. Up until this point, we don't really know a whole lot about the proposed user. It's really driven by the user who's seeking out other things without revealing what they are trying to propose or what they might be trying to do. And a number of large-volume water users have even requested that local governments enter into nondisclosure agreements as well. So it really limits what's available for us to evaluate as part of that process. But it isn't until that third icon on the screen there that we really start to understand from the regional perspective what might be available. And it's in that, once sort of those, some of those local agreements are reached, then that project goes public, is where some of the initial steps around site design, and we'll go into a little more detail in future slides on these, on site design, on environmental review, and eventually on congressional plan or plan amendments that might be needed to support that, where the council is in that green box, not really on any of those earlier portions of the slide. And then, of course, as those things become public, those are all public processes, well, at least the environmental review standards and the comp plan standards are public processes and meant to be, and that's where we also hear from residents around, from legislators, from other interested parties, and even neighboring jurisdictions about what may, what may be being proposed. So digging in a little bit, on the site design will serve, really what developers are looking for is a better understanding of what's available in that municipality for, as far as infrastructure, and whether that infrastructure is capable of supporting their proposed development. So those requests that, we have been a party to some of those when they want to investigate whether wastewater service is capable of supporting their proposed development. There's a, a lot of broad, if we had, say, this much need, would you be able to support that within a timeframe? And what the council does is really evaluate for our existing system capacity and potential treatment process impacts from a wastewater utility perspective. So some of those impacts are on that, and I'm not gonna speak too much to this, I'll let John do this a little bit later, but really dig into what those utility impacts could be. And then also, through this process, our environmental services staff have been engaging with the engineers for those developers to better understand those developments and to try to get a better understanding of whether we have the ability to provide service. The environmental review process is the next step where we tend to see these, because these particular types of users do trigger an environmental review. The types of review that we've seen have been in the A U A R category on the right-hand side, but just as a quick overview for folks who maybe don't do this every day, like some of our staff do and aren't down in the weeds in those rules. Environmental assessment worksheets are sort of what we consider to be that entry-level environmental review. It's usually provides basic information about a project, and this is for projects that don't trigger a mandatory environmental impact statement. They may trigger an environmental assessment worksheet, they're smaller in scale, or they may be done on a discretionary manner, but at any rate, usually are smaller in scale. Worksheet, as it implies, is meant to basically say, knowing all of these things about this project, can we determine, or do we have enough information to determine whether an environmental impact statement is required to address additional environmental impacts of the proposed project, or to evaluate whether there's additional impacts to the environment? And really is a great informational tool for the public, as well as for local decision-makers around how they might proceed with permitting going forward after that, knowing those elements about a project. Environmental impact statement is a much broader version of an E A W. The E I S evaluates the same questions, but in a much deeper detail, it usually requires additional studies around a whole variety of different things, including sometimes anything from species analysis and, and potential impacted endangered species in the state to transportation analyses, mitigation plans, water analyses, as well as it must consider alternatives in that E I S. E A W is just the project, and E I S requires that different alternatives are reviewed against the proposed project, because it is meant to identify what, what the best path forward is. In addition, E I Ss identify avoidance and mitigation plans to potential impacts as well, as well as other effects. A U A Rs are more of a planning tool, and we see these, and typically cities use these to evaluate cases where they're considering a potential variety of land use changes in a large area. We see examples like this all over the region, whether it's a community like Shakopee, who will be annexing land from a township, and they're trying to determine how best to proceed with land uses in those areas. Environmental reviews like A U A Rs help evaluate different scenarios, and typically are about land use scenarios over a large area and not about a specific project, per se. We've seen this for downtown areas, for station areas as well, especially when they cover large acreages. What we have seen in this process is that most of the large-volume water users have been using the A U A R process rather than an E I S process, which becomes much too general for the type of review that we would typically do for a project, and leaves us with wide ranges of potential impacts without knowing, like, on the conservative side, it could be this low, and on the other end of the scale, it could be incredibly high, and sometimes an order of magnitude that's severalfold and up to ten times difference between the low end and the high end of the scale. So it really leaves us in a position of not really knowing, like, what the real impact is going to be when there's a project related to that area. And then if that project requires a plan amendment, which in some cases they do, in many cases, these are in areas that have not been guided for a particular use, or maybe are being annexed into a community, or being re-guided from another use to, say, an industrial use, and, and most local plans don't account for, as I had mentioned, these types of large-volume water users. So even some of those changes in allowable uses are what are coming in. But as a review standard, the council for all plans and plan amendments always reviews those proposals for conformance with our regional system plans, which includes wastewater, transportation, and regional parks and trails for consistency with council policies, and that's across all of our adopted policies that you see in Imagine Two Thousand and Fifty today, and then for compatibility with the plans of adjacent and affected jurisdictions. We, as, as I've noted before, we typically see the environment, we see the environmental review first, and then communities then proceed with a plan amendment process, and where we review for those different items.
So one of the components that high-volume water users need to think about as they're putting their developments into the metro is where they actually will get their water supply. And there are two different options, and there could, well, there, okay, there are two known options. I won't limit us to just two, but we'll discuss two today. One is that the industry itself obtains a water supply allocation permit. The Department of Natural Resources is the water regulator for the state of Minnesota, and so they have to apply to the Department of Natural Resources to get an appropriations or an allocation permit. The D N R, when they are evaluating that permit, does think about the area that the water user will be coming from. They do assessments, and then they either approve or deny the permits. The water use, there was a change in, excuse me, I'm sorry, having difficulty reading that right now. The other option for industry is to come in under the municipal supply. And so if cities have extra capacity on their already existing water supply permits, the industry can just connect to the city's water supply system. This, there are different trade-offs, and while there'll be a slide later about those trade-offs, but generally speaking, if we're looking at the positives, this could be good for the city, as they now will be having a new customer onto their supply city as they now will be having a new customer onto their supply system, and that can help them generate additional revenue, especially since this industry will be using a lot of water to do its work. So that's the overall background on data centers, and now this is where we're going to get a little bit into those areas of concern. There are different areas that we have highlighted, but we also welcome you to, I guess, highlight other areas of concern that we haven't yet thought about in this presentation, so please do write them down and have ready to ask questions at the end if there's other additional follow-up. But the areas that we do want to highlight now are the environmental impacts on nearby water bodies, both above and below ground, the risks of municipal permits being used for industrial needs, industrial use versus long-term population needs, the cumulative impacts on wastewater and local water supply, regional wastewater impacts, wastewater discharge permitting, plan amendment decisions prior to D N R permitting timing, and then regional growth, management, and capital investment impacts. So I don't know how many of you are familiar with imagery that hydrologists draw, but at the bottom of this slide is an image of how water folks view what is happening below the ground when a well is turned on. Those little triangles are shorthand to say that's where the top of the water table is. So when the pump is turned off, that dotted line going across the top, that's where the water table is normally. And then, just like if you stick a straw in a glass of water and you suck on that straw very aggressively, you actually will see a dip in the glass of, in your water, like, and that is what we call in hydrology, a drawdown cone, because that well, at the bottom of it, is pulling a lot of volume, and that's causing the water table to actually dip down as a cone along that well, that, that well infrastructure. So that's why there's two different triangles in the blue line to show what the influence of turning on a well will do. There are two different wells depicted in this picture. The deeper well is the one that is doing the pumping, and then there's a shallower well that their neighbor has. And if you can see is when that deeper well is turned on and pumping, it actually drops the water table for that shallower well. That is called well interference, and it does happen naturally all across the metro. It does not have to be a high-volume water user that causes that concern. But high-volume water users have larger cones of depression than typical wells, and so we can start seeing that there might be a larger area of neighbors impacted if we are surrounded by private well owners in that area of influence. There also is a wetland depicted in this picture. And so you can see that as the water table drops, that actually disconnects the wetland from its natural connection to groundwater, and that can affect what happens for surface water features. Wetlands are the example here, but that does also mean trout streams, fens, bogs, some of those ecologically sensitive water bodies that we all have in our metro and enjoy having in our metro. Depending on how we manage our waters, those can become disconnected, and that is a concern. Going back to the wells, when water tables fluctuate, it allows oxygen to be exposed to the minerals that are in our aquifers, and there's a process called oxidation, which can mobilize, this is a lot of, I'm sorry, geogenic pollutants, and so really what that means is arsenic, manganese, some of those mineral, those pollutants that are found in rocks. By the moving of that water table, it can oxidize and free those pollutants so that when the water table bounces back, we can introduce those pollutants into those neighboring wells as well. So we now have, by the bouncing of the water table, mobilized pollutants that weren't mobilized before. And then lastly, and this is just a concern with development that we do think about through all of our review, but if there is going to be an increased amount of impervious surfaces, whether it's a roof or parking lots, that is also an opportunity for an increased movement of pollution across the surface as well. The industrial use versus future population growth. I'm going to tag team this with you.
Sure.
Okay. We can work on this on the fly. Every time that we do talk to cities about water supply concerns and high-volume water users coming into their community, we do talk about trade-offs because there is no right or wrong answer. Data centers or high-volume water users are not inherently bad, and they can bring things to communities. And so this is something that we want to make sure that we go, that locals go into this decision-making with eyes wide open. One of those areas is future, industrial use versus future population use. And this is specific for whether or not communities are bringing on water supply or, excuse me, high-volume water users through their municipal water permits.
Yes, Jen noted, and we've seen in some earlier proposals earlier this year, is that some of our high-volume water users are proposing to locate in smaller communities that may not have as large of a water supply as some of our larger communities do, or at least not a planned appropriation, and the growth that is planned for them, for their community as far as population, is not a large amount, but it's still growth that we're planning for within their community. And that's where we'll see a lot of these larger impacts as well. As you all know, we are responsible for guiding the growth and development of the region, and one of the base elements of that work is forecasting that population and employment across the region, both at the regional scale, and then allocating that to local units of government, government based on a variety of different market conditions, policy goals that you all set as well. A large-volume water user in a smaller community, their water use could be equivalent to what their total household growth projection for their community is through our Planning Horizon, whether that's 2040 or 2050, and can, in some cases, might even exceed that amount of growth. So without that water supply, there is no, or with that water supply being dedicated to a private user, there isn't any guarantee that additional appropriations might be given by the D N R to support their forecasted population or other employment growth that may also be forecasted for their community. And that really puts communities in, and having to consider whether that trade-off is worth considering or how they might navigate having to deal with what they might have as a, a more limited water supply in, in relationship to the amount of growth that they were planning to accommodate in both households as well as in employment. And while a high-volume water user might use a lot of volume, it doesn't mean it equals in the amount of employment that was projected for their community, that employment could be in a variety of other industries as well, including a whole lot of local businesses that may also be limited by their ability to grow if you see those constraints on those smaller systems. So it is a, is a, certainly a larger consideration for smaller communities in particular where they don't have as much, not as large of an appropriation and where that large-volume user could essentially flood their ability to do other items with their appropriation.
And so there's more trade-offs to consider. Like I said, there is no right or wrong answer. There are answers that are specific for each community, and they do need to take that into consideration. One of the advantages, like I mentioned in the earlier slide, of having a large customer join your municipal system is that you have an additional revenue source that you did not have before. That revenue source can provide greater financial stability for that water supplier, which is a really good advantage because it can help them to have the capabilities and the resources to enhance their system and make the updates because they now have more revenue to invest into their system. It also may reduce the risk of well interferences for the municipal system because if they did not bring that high-volume water user onto their own system, that high-volume water would sink a well nearby, there, could sink a well nearby their well field, and then that could cause conflict between that industry and that city's water supply. So there are advantages, and there are risks for a city taking on that customer. It might require additional infrastructure, there might need additional pumps to bring an additional amount of volume, pipes to convey it, and pumps to convey that water. The city could be liable to repair any damages affected by neighboring wells. So if that drawdown cone does impact neighboring wells, it is the permit holder who is liable to mitigate and repair those harms. We, also, in the state, we do have different priorities that get, water supply priorities that get cut off if we are in prolonged drought. And so within those priorities, industrial use is actually pretty low, so it can get cut off depending on the severity of the drought. Municipal supply is our top priority, so we try not to cut off municipal supply ever. And so if you bring an industrial user onto a municipal system, that allows them to shift the priority of that water supply for the user, and cities will have to figure out how they can make sure that they are providing water supplied for their residents and not having it being consumed by an industrial user. And then lastly, and this was the last slide, which was without additional allocations, and none of us have a crystal ball, none of us can tell you what the D N R will do. We, when we think about this, the risk is that we just always have to assume that the answer will be no, and how do we plan within the permits that the communities currently have?
All right, we've got one question. All right.
Jen, just a quick question. That was really helpful on the industrial residential piece. So is there, I just want to make sure this is the, the answer. So is there any way that a city can carve out an industrial user they bring into their municipal water supply, or is the answer no?
Yes, the city can.
Okay.
But that has to be in a legal agreement that has to come in when the developer is connected.
Got it.
And that is some of the recommendations that we are thinking or putting out there so that communities can consider that when the time comes.
Thank you. Yeah, do, do that.
This whole time, we have been thinking about the impact of one high-volume water user. So one high-volume water user comes to your community, and these are the impacts that you could see in those areas. What happens if that really great location in the metro is only in one part of the metro, and suddenly we are seeing co-locations of multiple high-volume water users? That is what we are short handing, the cumulative impacts on water systems. So you can see on the image, whether you want to see it the pushpins or if you want to see it as the multiple wells at the bottom. Suddenly, if you co-locate many high-volume water users, you can multiply the impacts of what those drawdown cones can have. So instead of just one straw in that glass, you have three, and they are pumping at high volumes, and they are creating cones of depression, which will have impacts to all of the other adjacent water bodies and all of these other things that we have already been sharing with key concerns. Unfortunately, this is not just a hypothetical. In the metro area, Dakota County has been experiencing the most demand of high-volume water users and developers targeting that area. And there are certain reasons why Dakota County is quite advantageous. There's, again, perceived water abundance, and there's also excess capacity on the electrical grid down there. So it is a prime area and land availability and all those other things that we had on that other slide. The concern that we do have is both, I mean, yes, for environmental impacts, but also thinking about below-ground water supplies and the impacts to our water resource recovery facilities. Give it to you.
So in addition to being large-volume water users, many of the same industries discharge large volumes of wastewater, and in the metro area, they're looking to connect to the regional wastewater system. In the wastewater planning and community programs group, we get involved in these development reviews by the processes that Lisa was talking about through the will-serv requests from D E D, and then looking at A U A R environmental reviews have been typical for data centers, as well as we've had at least one comprehensive plan amendment in Farmington. And so we're looking at those things from a regional wastewater system perspective in our group and trying to understand whether there's a system impact from, from the proposed development. In terms of comprehensive planning, we're looking at that conformance piece, whether it's conforming to the regional system plan. For these large-volume wastewater dischargers, there is a concern for our systems, the type of impacts we might see, our capacity-related in our conveyance systems, our pipes and pumping systems, as well as potential impacts to our treatment processes at our treatment plants. It's a different type of water than typically comes from domestic wastewater production, and so there is some concern about that as well. Our systems, in terms of capacity, our systems are designed with assumptions for, to serve typical urban and suburban growth. And so Jen had mentioned, you know, the number of homes that are equivalent to the water used, I think from a wastewater perspective, we're looking at something for one data center, for example, in Dakota County is discharging wastewater equivalent to five to 10,000, five to 10,000 homes. And so our systems just weren't ever, we never conceived of receiving that level of wastewater from a singular user, and we're taking a closer look at that as well as the potential cumulative effects that Jen was mentioning from a water supply standpoint. I think we've, we've looked at about a half a dozen data center requests or development proposals in Dakota counties in our Empire Treatment Plant Service area, and so it's important for us to look at how all of that water coming into our system could affect our treatment processes and capacities. And it's, it's not just about current capacity, but also something that we need to think about is the commitments we've made to serve communities. And so through the comprehensive planning process, communities have identified their growth needs, and our systems are designed to meet those growth needs, and it's something that we're considering as we're looking at this. In addition to the capacity, I mentioned potential effects on our treatment plant processes, and so this really gets into the water quality realm or the chemical makeup of the water. And our, we're working closely with our Industrial Waste and Pollution Prevention Group in E S, who manages a permitting program. They manage an industrial discharge permit program, and industrial wastewater discharges to the regional system are regulated by this permitting process to ensure they don't cause harm to our treatment systems or operations and that they're in compliance with federal and state standards. And this slide lists some examples of things that are regulated through that permitting process, like heavy metals, lead, chromium, acidic solutions that change the pH of wastewater, greases or hazardous wastes, things like that, that we want to prevent or limit coming into our system. So right now, we're working with our Industrial Waste Permitting Group, and we have an engineer conducting a study to look at data centers in particular in the Empire Wastewater Treatment Plant Service area. And so we're looking at a range of scenarios, kind of looking at that cumulative effect as well as individual data centers and what that might do to, our treatment plants use biological processes to treat the wastewater, and so there's a potential to upset those processes or cause impacts. And that study is looking at, at those impacts for a range of scenarios. And that, that work is being wrapped up this year, and we're having discussions across E S to really think about what are the potential concerns and whether our current review processes are adequate to deal with all of these different requests that are coming in that are, they're really unique compared to what we've experienced historically.
So some of the things I had touched on a little bit earlier, I just want to highlight as a concern here is really around that, kind of the quality of the information that is provided for review at the different stages of review that we have. As I had mentioned previously, the proposed developments are typically coming in through environmental reviews using the A U A R process, which is often too generalized and doesn't specifically identify a proposed project, even though that's the purpose for even though that's the purpose for the A U A R itself or why they're even doing the A U A R. So what we see in that environmental review are scenarios that are evaluations of potential scenarios that are so, have such broad ranges associated with them that it's hard to actually discern, like, well, what are you doing in this? And what can we expect to see on the ground? It makes, for a plan review process or for a land use planning to A U Rs makes sense because what cities do is they use that evaluation then to say, this is the group of land uses that we'd like to adopt. And then they then adopt those through their comprehensive plan. And we review those and we have those comments. But in a project-specific proposal, we don't see enough detailed information through the A U A R to know exactly what we're evaluating for. And that also means that potential mitigation plans are not as detailed or avoidance plans are not as detailed as they might have otherwise been when you have much more specific project data. And then getting into our comprehensive plan amendment process, you know, we're authorizing changes in land use and potential changes to the comprehensive sewer plan as well that might be related to that project. But it's still so general in the information that's provided because they're moving from that A U A R to comprehensive plan with that same level of moderate levels of information. And then, as Jen was talking about, our industrial waste permitting doesn't occur before the development, but actually after the development is built. And we can measure the strength of the discharge. So we're at that point, approvals have been given locally. Things have been authorized. And we're on the back end of what's in process happening there. So the council, both staff and the environmental review process, as well as you as policymakers, when we're bringing forward some of these changes, are being, you know, asked to comment, to provide direction, to evaluate projects with really incomplete information or vague information that puts us at a disadvantage to really have a true understanding of what the impacts of a particular proposed project might be at that time. One tool that the council has that you actually may not be as familiar with is this Metropolitan Significance Review. It has been a long time since the council has used this tool. It was last used for a proposed amphitheater in Scott County, the Black Dog Amphitheater, mid 2000s, 2006, I believe it was. It was actually right before I started at the council. So, and even though we've had the construction within this region of new stadiums, that's where typically a Metropolitan Significance Review might have been conducted. Those have all been publicly financed. And as part of that legislation, passing that finance, all of those projects have been exempted by the state from Metropolitan Significance Review. But what that review does is allows the council the opportunity to pause a project to more fully evaluate the impacts of that proposed project, both on the environment and on regional systems, and to come to agreements with the project proposers, the local unit of government of the best path forward. It's not meant to be a no to a project, but is rather instead meant to be a tool that helps better inform a project proposal going forward. Some projects in the use of Metropolitan Significance, some projects had undergone environmental review previously. And essentially, the Metropolitan Significance Tool acted as an environmental review tool for those projects. This was many years ago now. And our environmental rules have been adjusted and changed. But really, at the end of the day, we haven't, in this particular process, especially with the cumulative impacts that we're seeing, it does not, Metropolitan Significance is limited in its application to a specific project and not a group of projects. Where we're seeing, as Jen had talked about, this potential for cumulative impacts, impacts to jurisdictions outside of the home jurisdiction of the proposed project, doesn't quite fit the way that the Metropolitan Significance Law and Rules are written. And so it isn't a pathway that staff have proposed that we pursue because of other tools and because of how this rule has been or how this tool has been designed. As I mentioned, that the issue around cumulative impacts are really the most significant when it comes to council consideration in many fashions. Multiple proposers, even in different cities, but still co-located within the same aquifer, going to the same wastewater treatment plant, can really make this tool an inadequate tool for that type of review because Metro Sig doesn't consider those multiple projects in cumulative impact. And so in addition, it's an inadequate tool for addressing these known issues and might have the unintentional consequence of incentivizing a first-come, first-served approach for proposers out there as well. And then, kind of getting to the bigger picture, we had talked a little bit about the trade-offs that local governments may need to be making regarding their own water supply appropriations. At the larger level, if we, if local governments are also using or permitting large-volume water users, they may not have additional capacity, not just for water, but in our own wastewater service to them as well. Our, the council's authorization of a local comprehensive plan is like our contract with them to provide a certain level of wastewater service to meet their projected household and employment forecasts. When that volume is used, when that level of service, wastewater service is used by a single user, they may not then have the capacity to support their forecasted household growth. And we know that the region will continue to grow. We've already experienced this in other communities over the council's history, where there may be constraints in a particular community, locally chosen constraints within a particular community, that then, where they are not taking the growth that had been projected for them. And that growth goes to a neighboring community or needs to be planned for capacity elsewhere for that growth to still occur. We are, the region is still growing. And when those constraints are put into place or that lack of capacity is used up by something else, then we need to be thinking then at the regional scale, well, if those households aren't going there, they're going to go somewhere. And then we need to then begin to reallocate that growth elsewhere and potentially also realign our capital plans to support additional wastewater capacity to serve that growth going to another community where it may not have been planned to go, or at least in addition to their planned growth. So that really makes us have to sit back and think about, not just a single user, but when we have multiple users in a certain area that could overwhelm the capacity that we have already planned for other purposes in that area that can have larger, more region-wide impacts than just, not to just the neighbors, but to sub-regions, as well as the larger part, the larger growth across the region. And in addition to the council's own capital improvement plans for our systems. So where we're at today is really considering how best to advance the council's regional goals as you've identified in Imagine 2050. We do need to be able to provide regional service with the same or better levels of service while minimizing that additional financial and environmental cost to the region and to communities. You've probably heard us say this many times, but at the core of the council's work is planning for orderly and economical development. And so this is really a foundation for how we consider this larger issue today. The region can have industrial growth without necessarily sacrificing these future needs. But we do need to have the right information at the right time to be able to make informed decisions and to be, to better plan ahead for this work. We also recognize that this isn't just new for us, but it's new for everybody across the region. Local government staff are also in the same position as we are in trying to determine how to weigh these different needs and how to weigh local needs and trade-offs. And we recognize that they also need support as they navigate these proposals. So we have, there's a lot of conversation already underway in different areas. There are existing discussions that are ongoing between state agencies to ensure that we have the best statutory framework to take on these new industries. Environmental Quality Board, for example, has been having discussions around how we handle large-volume water users. Earlier this year, during the legislative session, there was a lot of conversation in both this House and Senate around not just the requests for incentives from the state, but on the environmental and regulatory side of how best to deal with the requests that they were seeing, not just here in the metro, but across the state of Minnesota in different areas. Our, my environmental services colleagues are finalizing some projects and studies, as John had talked about, to help provide a greater understanding of the impacts that we see across a variety of areas, both in water supply wastewater, as well as to the environment. And then as we're talking with you and as we're thinking about other places with some of, with some inadequate tools and frameworks we have today, we're really thinking about what else might the council do as we consider the impacts within the region and whether new council policy may be needed to address the growth management needs of the region. We do plan on returning to you in the coming months as we finalize those studies and share those results. But we also want to hear from you what concerns you might have, what additional investigations you might want us to look into, other things we might be able to provide or information you feel you need about this topic. Because we know this is a new and indifferent area, something that we don't have a lot of, kind of pathways plowed for us. And where we're advancing and discussing, how do we think about these areas across a whole range of issues from very local to region-wide issues? So with that, I will stop talking and turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all very much. That was very interesting. Our Councilmember Morales and then Cedar Burke.
Thank you for all the information. The one question I do have is, have we reached out to the data centers that are either already here or coming to find out what their own internal procedures are? Whether they have a closed-loop system, semi-closed-loop system, wastewater treatment, a mini wastewater treatment facility center on their property? Or what chemicals they're utilizing so we can plan appropriately without reacting to the situation? Just having that transparent conversation, too?
Do you want me to take that one? Okay. Chair Barber, council members. We have had a number of conversations, especially with the developers, engineers, who tend to be the people who are put in contact with us. They're very cautious about releasing any information, which makes it hard to work cooperatively with them. And so we've managed to kind of squeeze out ranges of potential flow rates and maybe potential water quality parameters that we could see. This is from the wastewater system perspective. And so we're working with them and trying to help them understand. We've been very transparent about what the capacity of our systems are and, you know, about what we could accept. And they're trying to find solutions. And I, my understanding, talking with them, is that they are looking at alternatives to sending all of that water into the sanitary sewer system and into the regional wastewater system, at least in some of those cases where they have really the hyper-scale data centers. They have a lot of potential water use. And at least in one case, with the Meta Data Center in Rosemount, Meta decided after understanding capacity limitations, I think also from a water supply standpoint, there was a concern raised by the city of Rosemount. And they've changed their processes for cooling to use less water. And so there is the ability to do that. I think it's more expensive for them. But they have adapted processes based on resource constraints.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Morales. The one thing that I will caution about this, and this is the words that just always are going to be coming out, is, I sit here as a water person. So the fact that they made the choice to not use as much water in their system, I support. But the trade-off means that there's a higher demand on the electrical grid. And so there are always going to be trade-offs when these decisions are made. And, I mean, we are representing the water concerns and the environmental impacts. But there are still additional concerns that I know the EQB covered in last month's meeting. And so there are some other, as we perhaps smile about one choice, there could be unintended consequences of that choice.
Councilmember Cedar Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I represent the Met Council and the Clean Water Council. And we're developing a policy on large water users as well. But I'd just like to thank you and let the council know that this is probably one of the best presentations on the ins and outs associated with water for large water users that I've attended, read, or seen. So you've just got the A Team here talking about this and explaining it. And it's the first time where everybody's talking water supply, but really, how you deal with the water after it's used could be even a more limiting step on that. So that, really highlighting that, thank you so much. The question I have is, it sounds like you're working toward it. But I think if you're going to come back to us in the coming months, is what process would you like to see? What tool, if the significant review isn't enough? Is there a new tool? I know people are saying they should automatically be bumped into an E I S because of all the sound issues and all the other issues. So, you know, maybe bring a draft of what you'd like to see. Because looking at the wastewater after it's built is really not an option for these facilities. I mean, and then who's going to pay for it? You know, it's all of those things. But anyway, so I would recommend that. And use your little icons and arrows and put together a flow chart of what process you'd like to see. Here's maybe an option of a couple new tools that you might use and new policy, and we could maybe talk about it. But thank you, really great job. I'm going to send it out to all the people in the Clean Water Council to say, come and listen to this presentation. So thank you.
Regional Administrator, give a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember, appreciate the kudos first to the group, too. I know this has been a challenging one because it cuts across a lot of areas, a lot of organizations and agencies, as you described. I did think that was a good level set. I'll just, on the tools needed, I want to highlight one other piece that doesn't show up prominently here, but there are conversations going on. And I think it's important as policymakers to help figure out where we sit, which is, you know, it's the non-regulatory upstream space of trying to shape the world you hope comes at you when you get to the point of needing to evaluate projects. And so I looked, you know, a kind of rudimentary, just slide nine was the three Venn diagram piece with conformance, consistency, and compatibility. And as I see that, I have no challenge to the way in which we're doing the evaluation work. We need to continue to think about that, how our tools interact with DNR and others. There's also this part that we've been trying to figure out with Greater MSP, for example, on that front-end piece. And also, a DED should be a part of that. How do we, how do we share these standards that will eventually become a part of the review upstream so that when they are prospectively trying to land, you know, economic drivers in the region, that they are doing it in a way that gets them people that can actually go the distance through the process? And that's been a tricky part because our incentives don't always align. Like, volume on their end and getting deals in place and getting interest is the biggest thing. But there is an interest because after a number of stops and starts, I think that has helped lead to some recognition of like, we have to figure out compatibility on the front end. And I don't know that that's a tool, but I do think we have to think about how that's going to look and how we work with other leaders and other systems to bring some sort of like winnowing together on the front end.
And I'm just going to follow up and say that we look at our council vision and goals. And we're always talking about equity, sustainability. And the lack of transparency of these projects really flies in the face of how the council wants to do business. And so that, to me, is a huge issue.
Councilmember Chamberlain, and then.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that looking at the upstream and also working with our other partners collaboratively to address these issues makes a lot of sense. You know, slide 10 talks about having to get the water supply permit from the Department of Natural Resources. Perhaps there's some information that needs to be provided in order to get that permit, that, you know, you were mentioning that we're not always getting the cooperation from industry. So I could see where, you know, some efforts to work with those other partners makes a lot of sense. So I could see where, you know, some efforts to work with those other partners make sense.
Madam Chair, if I may, Councilmember Chambliss, this last session, the DNR actually got an additional, there's additional statute put into place that, it's called the pre-application process now, and it is specifically targeted to these high-volume water users. That does bring them earlier into the DNR's awareness that they will be applying for a water permit allocation. And so we are starting to get the right statutes in place to help with this. I don't know if it's a comforting statement to tell you all, it is not just the council who perhaps doesn't have the policies in place to address this concern. This is a pain felt by many different state agencies and, quite frankly, many different states across this country. So we're not alone, and we're working with our DNR colleagues to make sure that we can help support each other in this work.
Councilmember Jenkins and then...
Thank you, Chair. So, excuse me. One of the questions I have is, we, from a water resource recovery perspective, will put, can put requirements on some of our industrial partners that they need to do some, I'll call it, treatment of the water before we bring it in. Are there tools in our, in our kit if a high-water user opens up? And, you know, they're within their range, but I've, I researched this before I got appointed, you know, as little as two, you know, family restaurants' worth of water, okay, there's your lower bar, where's the, well, we were within the range. Are there tools we could do in that regard from water resource recovery to say, okay, if this is what we'll agree to, we'll take in, and if you can't meet it, you've got to do it onsite? That would be something I'd be interested in knowing more about.
Chair Barber and Councilmember Jenkins. I, I don't know if it was a question, maybe, maybe not.
Well, it is a question. Is there a tool there we can use for high-water users, just as we do for other industrial customers?
Yeah, I, I think Councilmember Cedarburg alluded to the fact that, you know, our permitting process for industrial customers comes kind of late in the process, after they've built a development and, you know, they have a tenant that's moving into the development, and they have their, all the details of their water treatment processes and discharge parameters and things like that. And so we're trying to work out a better process to get at the front end of that. And I think in this particular case, it's challenging in that the developers are not necessarily the technology companies that are building the data centers. They're, they're developers that are building a space for a technology company to come into, and so they don't often have all of the details. And so there is a little bit of a catch-22 there, and I think we're trying to work through that and to find a solution that allows developments to move forward when they make sense, I guess.
Can you...
Councilmember Jenkins.
Okay, so let's take it another step. We know that other parts of the country have faced this issue before us. Can we design some policies based on, let's say, experiences in Loudoun County or, you know, the Phoenix area, Tucson, and be proactive and say, hey, if you don't, if your end-use doesn't fit in, not your range, but in our range, then we require you to do onsite, or we require other remediation to help? Because I know we're, we're not the first ones to face it, we're just maybe the most recent.
Councilmember, Madam Chair, Councilmember Jenkins, that's exactly what we're thinking about, is over these coming months before we return to you and, as Councilmember Cedarburg talked about, of thinking about options, certainly what others are doing is something that we'll be investigating further and using that to inform what we might be able to do here within our own statutory frameworks. Of course, every state has different frameworks for how they deal with different things, but absolutely seeing what others might have done if they were successful in their efforts as well. I don't think I've read of very many success stories at this point, though. So if you see any, please do share them along.
All right, we, Councilmember Tyrone Carter.
Thank you. My question is, how many high-volume water users do we have in our metro area? And is it typical for, because we have a lot of water, so, you know, is it typical for an area that has the amount of water available that we have? Because, for example, the Finger Lake region is very similar to this area, and how do we compare to them? And the second part of my question is, who are the top three high-volume water users in our area?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Carter, I am afraid to give you an actual number, so I will follow up with the specific number. I did ask my staff this before I came here today. The largest volume water, largest high-volume water user in the metro, based on permits, is Excel. And that's a little bit of a misnomer, though, because a lot of the water that Excel uses is non-consumptive. And so they will take it in at the edge of the St. Croix River, run it through their facility, and immediately discharge it back to the St. Croix. It might be a little bit warmer, but it's not to the point that it creates a temperature permit discharge concern for them. So they do pump from the river to run it through their plant, but it's not consumptive. And that's the part that it's a little hard to look in the database to get the right numbers of how many high-volume water users. So I will let my staff dig into that a little bit more, and then we will get you the right answer. Other high-volume water users that we do have in the metro, some of them, and this is thinking about like the dewatering aspects, so Kramer Quarry, which is down in the South Metro, that is a high-volume water user. They do pump that water to make sure that the quarry is available. The cool additional part of that story is that they then use that water for water supply within the metro area. And so there's an additional use where that water goes. And so we are thinking within the core metro area, it is going to be power generation and dewatering are going to be some of the higher uses. If we are thinking more towards the edges of the metro, that is where some of those larger agricultural producers can have pretty impressive permits and water uses to water the crops that they are producing. And so I think it's also spatially across the metro. And so I will follow up with a more specific answer, but that's the answer I can give you right now.
Councilmember Tony Carter and then Lindstrom.
Thank you. So much of the questioning just now has addressed this area of concern for how we are permitting those high-volume water users differently than perhaps major users. And so I continue to want to, as do others, understand what kind of suggestions will be coming forward in the future for that process of earlier attention and placing requirements to the extent that we can. I wanted also to complement what you all have presented to us, which really has been a very, very good overview of the concerns related to these uses within our community, both where the environmental concerns, you know, of the water table, of pollutants, of, you know, dissolved pollutants, et cetera, are concerned, but also the balancing act that we have to do when it comes to the need for development and the growth of jobs, balancing that against the growth of population and all of those things that really, really help us at this table, to be able to hear those concerns as they're coming forward and to make good decisions here. So thank you. I would have had more questions, but there are a lot of answers that have preceded my opportunity to share those thoughts. I look forward to hearing more about opportunities for permitting and requirements that help us to balance who pays and who benefits over time.
Madam Chair, can I actually just respond? And I should have said this earlier in the presentation, so I'm going to say it now. As you are thinking about different directions we can go, I do want to just reiterate, water supply is not a system that the council operates. And so that is going to be in collaboration with our partners at the DNR, who is the water supply regulator. That doesn't mean that your good ideas can't be passed on to other state agencies. Like, I promise I can be a conduit of those ideas, but just, I want to make sure that we are not overstepping into areas that we don't always have the authority to step into.
And on that, on that point, thank you. Of course, as it impacts our ability to give good information to our communities for the kind of planning that we are responsible for, both motivating and monitoring, you know, it, it really is a concern of ours. And so thank you for this attention to it and for all that you will be doing to share back with us what we can do to influence the kinds of solutions that we need. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry I missed the first half of the presentation, so you may have already mentioned this, but the EQB has come up a couple of times, and I just want my fellow councilmembers to know that we have a seat at the table. The chair is a non-voting member. Did you mention this already? Okay, good. Okay, good. The chair is a non-voting member of the Environmental Quality Board, and I am the designate for, for the chair at the EQB. And we also have a technical representative, a staff, staff member, McKenzie, who's, Young Walters, who's our technical representative at the EQB. So we are very much at the table, and they have a very critical role to play in environmental review, as you heard. And so I'll just throw it out there, if you, if you have a large water user in your region and you are curious to know more about the environmental review, the EQB is probably involved in some way, shape, or form, or would know who is involved, and so we can find out more about that particular project.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Lillogren.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks so much to the team for presenting this. I think this is fascinating. I'm learning a lot, and I really appreciate the affirmation from Councilmember Cedarburg about the quality of what we're seeing here, and with your expertise, that's, that is very helpful. And my questions kind of go, and they're not perfectly formed, and I apologize for that, but sort of building on what Councilmember Jenkins was saying about learning from others' experience and best practices, in direct broad, it doesn't fill me full of confidence that you can bring up some success stories here. But to, when Dr. Carter, Councilmember Dr. Carter asked a question, Jen, you did a great job of sort of giving us a snapshot of the status quo, who's using it a lot now? And I feel like part of our regional goals, or part of our role, is this long-range vision, right, and planning. And so I know this is not a presentation about data centers, but in my thinking, that's kind of the newest actor in this space and in this region. And from the little that I do know, it has the potential to be a huge impact on the systems that we either are responsible for or that we work in partnership. And then I know this is kind of a newer use, right? That's why we're still learning a lot about it. And I don't know if this would even be the right word to use, but I'm just thinking around, you know, is this a bubble? Is this something that we could over-prepare for or over, I don't know, regulate or pass policy or, or if a lot of these open and then they close within a 50-year, you know, a planning horizon, how are we developing policies and a vision to reuse the capacity that we might have put in specifically for this use for a data center? So, so I guess, I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments about this idea of it's being sort of a bubble or over-preparing or, or getting caught under-prepared?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Lillogren, you're singing to my long-range planning heart in that regard. It certainly is something that we think about, especially with the speed that technology has been changing, of how much we expect, like, how much, how long would we expect this type of use to last? What might innovation look like in this sector that might reduce the need for water, maybe in a shorter timeframe or space needs? Like, so much has changed in such a short period of time when it comes to these, on the technology side of data centers in particular, but there may be other users that we're not contemplating today that are also large-volume water users that may come and take that same spot that in the future that we just aren't anticipating. I think as we're looking forward, we certainly are always wary of kind of the premature investment of, in our regional infrastructure, in underutilization of infrastructure investment that we've already used or already invested in and, and built. And, because we don't want to, the whole region pays for that when we put all of those pieces in place, and then they're going underutilized or unused. And then as we think forward across those things, I think what we want to be, as we're considering potential options, and the reason we brought this forward to you today as large-volume water users and not as data centers, was to be thinking about in the scope of users that could have these types of impacts, what would we do? It could be any user in any industry that has this type of impact. Are there other considerations that we'd want to build in, into our policy, like you were saying, that helps mitigate against those users closing up shop in a very short timeframe and what that might leave for us at the regional scale to deal with? In my old-fashioned city planning days, it was something that we thought about when we had large, big-box stores coming into our small towns, about how we required different elements in case they closed early, because it was a typical approach back then to leave stores vacant from these very large national corporations, to leave those stores vacant on the landscape with doing nothing with them. So they were, especially in small towns, were really hard on local economies. And so we built in regulatory processes to prevent that from happening. So I think those are some of the things that we'll want to consider as we look at those potential policy options and permitting choices about where do we have the discretion to, to look at those impacts, the potential long-range impacts, and write in requirements that could help mitigate against those or prevent those. So that will be some of the investigation that we do as part of this work.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Lillogren, I'm chair, sorry, wrong order. The other part that my staff and I have been playing around with the scenarios of, well, we might not have case studies to say how to knock it out of the park to welcome these high-volume water industries. We do have a lot of analogous situations from the past in which there have been high infrastructure demands that have become abandoned. And so thinking about the fracking industry, thinking about, again, maybe it's not just 100% matched to water, but there are lessons learned that we can harvest and make sure that we are not going to be in that same situation of investing in an industry that was somewhat of a fleeting opportunity.
Thanks, very affirming.
Councilmember Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Number one, I'm the chair of the Metropolitan Area Water Supply Advisory Committee, which has the state agencies on it as well as the local water suppliers. And so this is something that we're working on collaboratively. And, you know, everybody's frustrated at some of the mismatches in the, in the process. And so we hope to find some solutions that everybody can, can live with, but that is another place for having that discussion. And then talking about success stories, so the city of Elko New Market several years ago had to put in a water treatment facility, which was very, very expensive, because they had radium, which is naturally occurring in their water supply, that had to be removed in order to be safe to drink. And it was very, very expensive, and they had to go to monthly water billing, because it was so expensive that it was, you know, freaking people out. And especially in a community with new development, where you're trying to establish landscaping, the water demands are higher than in a more mature community. It drops once your landscape is, is established. So them getting the Niagara water bottling plant was very controversial, but it also provided another big user to pay for that water treatment facility. And there were some hiccups. They have to do a pumping test to make sure that the system can handle the additional pumping, which I thought was really goofy, because they pump the water out of the ground and they have to send it just off. They can't let it infiltrate back in, because that would mess with the pumping test. So you're wasting all of that water. And it just seems like if we could find a way, I know it's, you know, a short-term thing, but just pumping all that water out of the ground and throwing it away seems like such a waste, and it'd be nice if we could find some way to send... It'd be nice if we could find some way to send it somewhere for use rather than, than just dumping it and having it go down the river or whatever. But when that happened, there were some people who had problems with their wells that started dredging up some sludge that was loosened up with the, the new pumping and stuff. But the DNR also requires that if there's a well interference within a mile and a half, I think, it used to be the, the general guideline, that the city has to pay for whatever repairs. And so, there's, you know, it, it may be an inconvenience, but at least it gets taken care of. But that, that economic impact for the city of Elko New Market made them competitive again in being able to establish new development, because it was, people were going, holy cow, I don't know if I want to build a house there and pay those kind of water rates, but we do need single-family homes in the, in the region, and now that's able to happen again.
Thank you. Councilmember Pacheco?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and this probably is kind of off the wall, if you will, but have we looked at some of the comparisons to the, the storage of nuclear waste along the river and the involvement with XL Energy? And, you know, what do we do with the, here, does it stay, does it stay on the dry-cast storage here, or do we move it out? What happens to the river if it, something happens? But, because that was a long process, went through the legislature, and it is somewhat similar, but, you know, not the same. It's one industry, and it's, it's kind of, now they're, they fill the cask, they still put it on land there because they have nowhere else to put the, the waste. It was supposed to go to Vegas or, or to Nevada, never happened. And so, now there's a certain amount of money that, if it's filled, one cask is filled, that so much money goes to the environmental fund, and every, every time they fill another one, that's more and more money. They don't, so you don't hear much about it, but I, I just don't know if there's comparisons in that process.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Pacheco, it's, I don't know that we've looked at nuclear waste, but that's certainly something we can bring back to our teams to consider as something of an analog for like, how are other industries dealing with waste outputs? I know as agent, as a wastewater recovery facility, that we have discharge limits, and that's about where my expertise ends, so I will leave, you know, John and, and his colleagues will be able to know better if there are things that we can learn or lessons we can learn from that work. But I don't know that we have the ability to box things up and send them away necessarily. But we'll look into it.
Again, I, I don't know, it says, may have, well, so, I was working at XL Energy at the time, or NSP, and so, just looking at that process and how much, it's, it's also the water, it's always coming in and then, you know, putting back out there. And so, there was every alphabet soup, which the DNR and this, that, you know, the owners of the land, the tribe, there was a lot going into it. So, I just was wondering if there was any kind of comparison.
Madam Chair, Councilmember, certainly some of the other mechanisms, though, the kind of paying into a fund to support some of those elements, might be some mechanisms that we consider as part of our permitting processes as well. We certainly, there are things that, you know, at, at this stage of, of looking at our processes, like all things around the table until we determine that they can't be on the table, essentially. So, I appreciate that.
All right, any additional questions, comments?
I just have a couple of quick comments, then. First of all, really, really well-done presentation. It's hard to take highly technical information and make it relatable, and you did. And I think that's, you know, all of us, I mean, I know I learned something today, so I think that was really helpful. So, I really, really appreciate the time you did to, to explain it to us, so we can explain it to others, what the impact is. I'm really glad to hear there's a lot of agency cooperation, but you've heard, there were several groups, everyone's kind of working on it. And that always makes me a little nervous as to who's actually going to own it. And so, that would be like my caution as we go forward, to make sure somebody owns it and, and is, is really kind of the leader in that space. It's really critical. And then, the last comment was, I would look at some of the work we're doing here as we're developing policy, that maybe it's not us with putting out, this is what you do, but we're going to have counties and communities doing comp planning. And I kind of likened it to what we did with the solar developments. So, for some fellow council members, like, we, we had someone on staff to help people go out and talk about it and help develop their policies. And that might be a good role for us in, in sort of this realm of things, so.
Anyhow, all right, any other final things?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I do want to respond to one of your comments. So, my team is working with some consultants to pull together some local guidance that actually can do exactly that. And so, we're hoping to have that, I'm afraid to actually say this out into the world.
That's fair.
We're hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of this year so that we can share that information with locals as they are starting their comprehensive plan process, knowing that this is a part of that, but also through the environmental review, we really would like to have that list of questions that we would like locals to ask and explore. Again, we don't know the right answers, that is up to the local jurisdiction, but at least we can give them a starting point of what questions to ask.
That's great. I really appreciate that. All right? All right, thank you, guys. Before we wrap up, a couple of things for council members. First, Transportation Committee. Transportation Committee usually meets at Haywood this time of year. It will be moving to Robert Street for the rest of the year, so we always lose a few people, at least one, when we transfer. So, just keep an eye on invites. They're having some AV issues with the conference room at Haywood, so we're moving over to their site. So, just check your invites to make sure you know where you're going. Not looking at you. The other thing is, we have a good event this weekend, so we're, the Beeline. We weren't able to celebrate the opening in June due to the tragic events here in the state. So, we're going to do the next best thing, and we're going to celebrate a million Beeline rides. So, in less than five months, we've crossed over a million rides. So, there's an event on Saturday, everyone's invited. If you don't have the information, let us know. Run from noon to 3:00 on Saturday at the Martin Luther King Recreation Center in St. Paul. It's going to have live music, food, Beeline promotional items, and family-friendly activities. There'll be a short program at 12:30. But if you need more information, just reach out, and we will get them to you. I hope to see you there. All right, anything else?
Madam Chair, two updates. I don't know if they've been repeated here, and so, I just wanted to make sure we're all tracking, because there's been a lot going on the federal front over the last month and a half. So, one, HUD funding was pushed through, through the end of the year for both staff and to be able to provide rental assistance. And so, I don't know if that's been fully said, and I want to make sure we all are aware of the timeline we're working on. That does align with the idea that Congress needs to pass a budget for next year to be able to move into the new year. And so, it doesn't solve the issue, but at least it moves the issue from being what was earlier right now to later, and we're thankful for that piece. And we were continuing to meet today, for example, with Minnesota Management and Budget and talking about timelines and potential impacts as they're scanning. So, that's one. Secondly, just kudos to the group that worked here on compliance with the disadvantaged business enterprise interim final rule-making process that came down. Federal guidance or a federal FAQ did come out about two weeks after the rulemaking came out, which was extremely challenging. And so, we worked hard with MINDOT to develop a process, and in the end, six of the seven categories for where our procurements were at were still compliant. The seventh category wasn't, so we worked hard over the last two weeks to get that category compliant. And at this point in time, all of our procurements are continuing forward. And just as importantly, in case you hear from anyone in the contracting community, the Minnesota Unified Contracting Program, MNUCP, currently chaired by our very own Ashanti Payne, has now begun the process of recertifications under the new DBE disadvantaged guidelines for businesses, so that we can then, again, assign goals to projects as previously was allowed in the past. That'll take a number of months and be with us into quarter one of next year, January, February timeline. But we're doing that in concert with the MAC, with MINDOT, with our organization, and with the city of Minneapolis. And so, just wanted to share those two updates. Happy to answer any questions if you have them at any point, just please let me know. And thanks to the full team and the chair, who, it was a, it was a busy couple of weeks as we pulled that one together.
Absolutely. All right, anything else from anyone? Councilmember Lindstrom?
I just wanted to thank Patrick Boylan, who stepped up to the plate last week at the last second. My brother is a professor at St. John's, St. Ben's, and he was looking for a presenter at the very last second. So, who does my brother call me to step in? And who do I call? Lisa? And my brother's a urban, urban planning professor, political science professor, and he was talking about comp plans. And so, Patrick Boylan stepped up at the last second, and we tagged-team a presentation, and he did an amazing job. I hung in there as well as best I could, but Patrick really carried the load, and we got him excited about internships, the Met Council. And so, thanks very much. Lisa and Patrick.
That is great to hear. Well, thanks, everyone, for a really great conversation. I think this was a wonderful discussion, so I really appreciate it. And with that, we can be adjourned.